I will live, okay. A call to order, the December 7th, 2020, regular meeting of the Everett School Committee. Addie, roll call, please.
Mr. Barrows.
Present.
Ms. Cardelo.
Yeah.
Ms. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Lambert.
Present.
Mr. Panerisi. Mr. Parker.
Present.
Ms. Sarny.
Yeah.
Mayor Di Maria.
Present.
Mr. Abaze.
Present.
Mr. La Monica is here as well.
Yeah, Joe La Monica is also here. I knew we had.
Apologies.
That's okay. Thank you.
We have eight members, plus the mayor present. We have a quorum. Just in terms of the roll call. Alan contacted me. Needless to say, there's been, with the spike in the COVID, he's working pretty much around the clock and unable to be here tonight for the meeting. And that's the bad news. Good news is, welcome back, Joe. Hope you're feeling well. And.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Joe. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag.
For the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roman numeral three, reading of the records.
The chairman, I'll move to waive the read of the records and place on file.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to waive the reading of the records and place it on file. Everything's roll call on virtual. Well, roll call vote, please, Addie.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Sarny.
Yes.
Mr. Abaze.
Yes, affirmative. Motion passes. Roman numeral four, public comment.
Yeah, we have one person waiting. Give me one.
Make a motion to open public comment?
Second.
A motion been made and seconded to open for public comment. Roll call, please, Addie.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Sarny.
Yes.
Mr. Abaze.
Yes, in the affirmative, public comment is now open. We know the rules. The rules would be three minutes. Identify yourself, give your address, and understand that the school committee or anyone else here present will not respond to whatever is said. But having said that, welcome, public comment. Whoever it is, please come on board.
So far, there's no one waiting.
I will wait a little bit. Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close public comment. Roll call, please, Addie.
Ms. Cardelo.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Sarny.
Yes.
Mr. Abaze.
Yes. Any affirmative, zero negative, motion passed. Public comment is closed. We go to Roman numeral five, reported as superintendent. Welcome Superintendent to Hilli Island.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to everyone. So tonight's update is a lengthy one, so I just want to warn everybody about that. I feel like I'm always starting that way. We just always have a lot of information that we want to share, and I hope and trust that it will be very helpful to everyone who is tuning in tonight. So we will start with some important district updates, including a great achievement by three of our high school students. We will also provide the details about some new leadership councils we're forming that we think will foster some greater communication and collaboration amongst our EPS leadership and our students and families. We will also share with you some of the latest work being done by our virtual learning leaders, and we will highlight the initial data we have compiled from a parent survey on certain aspects of remote learning. We also have an update on the winter sports season, details of which have been carefully crafted by members of the Greater Boston League. And finally, we will have our latest attendance data to share with you, as well as the most up-to-date COVID-19 figures, as well as a summary of our most recent meeting with the COVID-19 response team. So I will start with a fundraising effort that was organized by Everett High School graduates Haley Peliquin and Jada Vaughn. These impressive and dedicated young women have started the nonprofit organization District of Equality, and they held their first fundraising effort recently in the form of a book drive for our students. Haley, Jada, and their team raised enough money to purchase more than 320 books for EPS students, and with the help of library coordinator Mary Puleo, school committee member Marconi Almeida-Boros, and a group of dedicated volunteers, we had a very safe and seamless distribution, which was at the Lafayette, the Parlin, and the Whittier e-Learning Centers. Cesar Lazar Jr. and Reynold Lazar of Everett-based Soulside Skincare were also instrumental in this successful event, and it was just such a pleasure to meet all of these alum and to meet Haley and learn about the District of Equality. You know, it really never ceases to amaze and impress me how dedicated our graduates are, and, you know, how dedicated they are to giving back to the students and residents of Everett. So I just wanted to thank them for everything they did. Next, a quick shout out to our art coordinator Amanda Gill and EHS RAD educator Nicole Capra, who teamed up with local artist Tracy Fuller on creating inspirational artwork to benefit our students. So their work includes prints, cards, and stickers that feature quotes from female authors and leaders. The artwork is being sold at All She Wrote Books at Assembly Row in Somerville. All of the proceeds are going to benefit a young feminist club at Everett High School that is aimed at empowering and educating women in our community. And so this club is currently being organized, and we will actually, it's in its new, it's beginning phases of establishment. So at our next meeting, we will actually be asking for a formal approval of this group at our next school committee meeting. But for anybody who is interested in making a purchase or browsing in the store, please visit www.allshewrotebooks.com. I'm also very proud to announce that Everett High School students Alyssa Hurley, Lakisha Kernan, and Bree Thika Maharajan captured first-place honors in a competition sponsored by the MassSTEM Hub. So these very intelligent and creative students created an original app called Speckles, which provides information about COVID-19 and how to slow the spread of the disease. So in judging the app, a Boston-based civil engineer congratulated our students on their ingenuity and even commented that their app goes above and beyond the task of contract trace, contact tracing, and devises a comprehensive view of how to flatten the curve, and even said that, you know, he would absolutely download this app and feel confident that the community would be safer as a result. That was a high compliment to their app. I also wanted to thank EHS science teacher Anna Siders for supporting the high exposure effort. And in completing, in speaking about this completion, Anna did tell the STEM Hub that this project could not have come at a more perfect time, because not only did it fit into her curriculum, but it also allowed students to engage in a real-world problem that drastically impacts the community. And so, you know, it's a really engaging and authentic experience for our students. So you can learn more about this fantastic project under the District Updates page on our website. So the next two slides deal with outreach and engagement efforts, one for students and the second for families. So over the past two weeks, we have begun the process of creating a Student Leadership Council, or SLC, which will be made up of Everett High School students who will collaborate and partner with me and other EPS leaders on improving school culture. So the SLC is a useful way to fulfill our core value of empowering our diverse student body through positive and meaningful dialogues with central administration. So the goal is for the SLC to build relationships with educators and school leaders, and it will help implement and sustain projects and initiatives. So we are in the process of gathering interest forms, which we have emailed to the EHS students, and I look forward to sharing more information about this in the coming weeks. The interest form is still open for any students who are listening. I do hope that not only will they fill out an interest form, but please pass it along to any of their friends or peers who may also be interested, because we'd love to get a great, you know, a large showing of our students in that group. In the next, in an oh, effort to promote a safe and welcoming environment, not only for our students, but also for our families, we are offering EL Parent Advisory Committee meetings in the four major languages of the Everett Public Schools. So providing meetings in the language of our families by each linguistic community will serve to bolster our English learner parent participation and foster meaningful conversation to support their students. So we will, this will be an ongoing effort, but to start, we plan to hold two meetings during this school year. All of them will begin at 6:00 PM. The Spanish-English Learner PAC meetings are scheduled for January 12th and April 6th. Meetings for Portuguese families will be held on January 13th and April 7th, and the dates for Haitian Creole and French-speaking families are slated for January 14th and April 8th. So we have allotted an hour and a half for each of the meetings, all of which will be held via Zoom, and which will be supported by our English learners director Anne Augur, and led by our family liaisons who speak the appropriate native language. And, you know, and kind of a switch of what we normally see, English interpretation will be provided for those who need it, including myself, my team, and any others who do choose to join, including those on the school committee. So we are very excited about starting this kind of meaningful dialogue with our families and to really get to include them, you know, in a way that we find to be really meaningful and authentic to them. So our virtual learning leaders have continued to be very busy providing our families with information that can help their students navigate remote learning. So the team is in the process of holding a series of webinars for parents and caregivers that are available, again, in our major languages. The quick and informative virtual sessions focus on one of the major platforms we utilize for remote learning. So far, David Green has held a session on Google Classroom, Valerie Ward led a presentation on iReady Basics, and Adrian Sapieno held a session on Footsteps to Brilliance. So these webinars are all available on our website for viewing at any time. A webinar on Edmentum, led by Marissa McQueeney, was held earlier today and will also be posted this week. Additionally, Everett High Science teacher Anna Siders will hold a webinar on X2 on Wednesday, December 9th, from 6:00 to 6:30 PM. X2 is the system that EPS uses to manage all facets of our student data. So on behalf of the district, I just want to thank the virtual learning team for developing these webinars and helping our families learn about the online platforms our students are utilizing for our e-education model. Next, as we think about the time when we will be able to bring back large numbers of students into our buildings and classrooms, air quality is fundamentally important consideration. So on this front, we have procured at no cost 550 air purifiers for all of our classrooms and main office areas. So these purifiers were made available through an initiative by DESI. So we were very fortunate to be able to be included in this initiative. The models are made by Medify, and they feature a modern, unobtrusive design. They do use HEPA filters, which will be replaced twice annually under the direction of our maintenance department and the guidelines for the device. So each unit provides somewhere between two and three air changes per hour. So these units are not intended to compensate for any deficiencies in the air quality of our buildings, which we have shown in our studies are quite good. However, again, we want to support and enhance our existing systems and protocols to make sure that our students and staff have the best possible air and greatest peace of mind when we are able to return, hopefully sooner rather than later. And while the devices themselves have come at no cost, which was a huge burden off of the district, the filters do cost a significant amount of money when we have to change them. So I did want to make sure that this group is aware of that, and we will be including those in the appropriate expense lines. So now we will turn our attention to the family survey we posted in November. The results we've collected so far paint a small, you know, we do want to get more responses, but a pretty clear picture of what our parents and caregivers are thinking about e-education, as well as some of their concerns and their priorities. So we sent the survey directly to families in an email from me, and it was also posted on our website. So these findings are from the first batch of responses that we have received, and we will be continuing to monitor the responses as they come in to take note of any noticeable trends and/or obvious preferences. So if any families are listening and hear this information and want to make sure to weigh in, please know that we are continually looking at the responses that do come in. But as for the ones that we already have, as is our routine practice now, we did offer the survey in our five primary languages: English, French, Haitian Creole, Portuguese, and Spanish. So in this next slide, you'll see when we compiled the first round of results of this survey, 236 families responded in English, 35 in Portuguese, 24 in Spanish, two in Haitian Creole, and one in French. So we're also doing some targeted outreach to make sure that we are getting a, you know, a wide distribution of responses. And as part of our continued efforts to look at all of our data through an equity lens, we've also asked families in the survey if their student is on an IEP and/or if they are an English learner. So this helps us determine if there are any significant or noteworthy discrepancies among our respondents. So in this case, 81 of the families who completed the survey did have a student who was on an individualized education plan, while 213 do not. 53 of the surveys were from EL families, and 236 were not. So this next slide is an encouraging one, as it shows that the vast majority of respondents strongly agree or agree that their student's daily class schedule is easy to follow. So by way of background, the student schedules were created in August to unify the district and to create a common schedule across all grade levels. But unlike a traditional school year, we did not view our schedules as permanent. We knew they would need to be reviewed, potentially altered, and definitely discussed among central administration and building leaders throughout the year, especially based on the vital feedback of the teachers who are working with our students and families every day. So as the first quarter ended, we wanted to take a long look at what we could adjust and enhance. What we found is that there is actually a strong desire to maintain the schedules we worked so hard to formulate at the beginning of the year, but also a clear preference to create more synchronous time between teachers and students. So we did, you know, receive feedback directly from families, even from school committee members who had heard from families. So as a result, we've developed a way to seamlessly introduce more face-to-face teaching and learning on a daily and weekly basis that can benefit our teachers and students, but without causing any disruption to our families. So we are also exploring scheduling alterations that will allow students to receive extra teacher support after the lunch period. So this would be voluntary, so that students are seeking additional assistance. You know, can receive that extra support if they need it. So the virtual learning during that time will also remain in place. We are also examining additional ways of increasing instructional time for ELA and math. But again, we did want to make sure we were being responsive to what we were hearing from families about schedule changes, and we saw the data from this survey, and so we did, you know, sort of reframe our thinking, wanting to make sure that any, anything that we add is indeed additive, and it's not making the schedules that our families are relying on any more difficult or strenuous. So this next question illustrates that our parents and guardians are overwhelmingly reaching out to their teachers for support if they need it. And this is working out quite nicely. That is always what we recommend, is the first line of defense being the teacher. And but on this next slide, it clearly shows that when our families do reach out for support, they are receiving the help that they need. So more than 95% of respondents agree or strongly agree that we were being responsive. This is great to see, and I know I speak for the entire district when I thank our teachers for their invaluable and tireless efforts to make sure that, you know, they are, you know, meeting all of the needs of our families right now, which I know are very diverse, and there have been a lot of concerns and questions, and we just really appreciate the teachers taking the time to talk with all of the families and make sure their concerns are addressed. So this next question allowed parents to select multiple options about what they wanted to see more of in the near future. So as you can see, most of the choices generated a noticeable response, which is what we would expect, you know, from this, our diverse and vibrant community. But two of the choices attracted a particularly strong response. So there's a clear preference for creating virtual opportunities for social interaction, as well as a strong desire for the resumption of clubs and activities. So as we map out the next phases of the school year, these considerations will figure prominently into our planning. They, because they do go straight to the social and emotional well-being of our students, and they definitely align with the plan that we have been discussing over the course of the weeks. The third and most popular choice is more paper packets, with 87 families checking off this option. So this is something our curriculum team is considering, based on cost, availability of products, and distribution options, which of course need to be done safely. So this is also something we're exploring and addressing at the school level as well. So the Parlin School, for example, has prepared packets for all students in grades K through four, and distributions are being organized for students in grades five through eight. So we are starting to, you know, make sure that we are taking this feedback and really putting it into place to the best of our ability. So this question did not generate clear consensus, as 106 respondents indicated that their students' academic growth is their biggest concern under remote learning. An additional 99 families said that their biggest worry is the social-emotional health of their students. And then 23 families cited the absence of extracurriculars and athletics as being their biggest concern, which is something that, again, we will discuss in more detail later. So here, what we're seeing is, you know, again, the full range, which I think, again, speaks to our diversity of students, that, you know, the biggest concern for each student is individualized, and so it is important that we are making sure to try and address everything, the academics, the social-emotional learning, and the extracurriculars as much as we possibly can. This question focuses on technology, and the results continue the overall positive trend. So of the respondents, 187 indicated that their student does not need any assistance, while another 35 reported that their student requires help only with the log on process at the start of the day. 73 families did report that their students need a moderate or significant amount of help, and so we are hoping, you know, that we can do further outreach. We are, you know, trying to make the webinars that we talked about earlier tonight. Again, we're trying to figure out ways to help the families solve some of the issues that continue to crop up. But I must say, I have been more than impressed, you know, with the resiliency of our students and families. I know I keep saying this, but I can't stress it enough. You know, we've introduced a lot of technology in a very short period of time, and the learning curve, you know, has been, has not been as sharp as we had originally feared, you know. And that is not to say by any stretch that this has been easy or that we have resolved all issues by any means, but I just continue to marvel at how fast our students have immersed themselves in e-education and how, you know, more and more comfortable everybody's getting over time. So this chart shows that a very strong majority of respondents believe that just the right amount of work is being assigned by teachers. So we were certainly happy that there is a clear consensus on this front, and we give, again, a great deal of credit to our educators for finding the right balance. And then finally, with this question, we were trying to get a sense for how students are doing throughout the day from a social-emotional perspective and how they are faring from an engagement standpoint. So the results are varying. While the majority of respondents report that their students need very little or no help during the day, which is very positive, more than 80 families did indicate that their students need a moderate or significant amount of assistance staying engaged in e-education during the day. And again, this is different from the previous question, which was about the technology aspect. This really is about, you know, the ability to stay motivated and engaged. So this is consistent with what we have heard from teachers and principals, as students have responded differently to remote learning. You know, what is comfortable for one student, it can be difficult for another. And so this is an issue that, again, we continue to pay attention to, even when we eventually transition back into the classroom, and that we are doing targeted outreach to those students to make sure that we are providing them with the support that we can. So switching to attendance, I wanted to just give you a quick update on our latest figures. So there have been no significant changes in recent weeks, which is good. So as of the 53rd day of school, more than 5,600 of our students have an attendance rate of 90% or higher, including 2,486 students who are boasting perfect attendance, which is great. So the district's attendance average is 93%, which is equal to historical data from the past decade. As of today, and this was actually the same figure from before, there were only 13 students who have not logged on. Those were the same 13 that I had mentioned earlier. We have been able to contact and follow up with all but two of them, and each one of them has different circumstances that we are working with them on in order to make sure that we can get them logged on and supported. We do continue to track our contact with families of students who are struggling with attendance to find out why and to help in any way that we can. And again, I commend our staff for their consistency in this effort. So shifting to the latest COVID-19 metrics. So it is clear that we are reaching a critical phase at the local, state, and federal levels. As we anxiously and optimistically await a vaccine, positive cases have surged in recent weeks, and we do need to exercise caution as we weave through the rest of the holiday season. So as a district, we are planning to bring back as many students as we can as soon as we can. But before we can do that, we do have to experience a demonstrable and sustained reduction and flattening of cases. So this means that we will not be able to revisit the conversation regarding going to a large-scale hybrid model. We want to revisit it at least the second week of January. In the meantime, we just really need to emphasize and reemphasize health and safety and the role that we all play in trying to bring the pandemic under control in the coming weeks, especially with another holiday upon us. So our plan is to begin the conversation about returning to school after the holidays with the hope of starting a hybrid model in February. I feel that this is neither too ambitious nor too cautious, and again, we And again, we, you know, continue to look at the numbers and meet with our health advisory. So here, beginning our slide presentation, we start with the two-week average of incidence rates. And you'll notice that the lines have started to downward movement in recent days. So hopefully Christmas and New Year's will not see a repeat of the spike that we experienced over Thanksgiving and we will continue on this downward trend, which would certainly then support our conversation for returning to hybrid. In the next slide, you'll see that the city has regularly been reporting more than 30 or 40 cases per day. On Thursday, December 3, the number did surge to 64, of whom 13 were under the age of 10. And then on Friday, December 4, we had 106 new cases. So fortunately, those figures have actually dropped in recent days. So in Everett, we reported only 19 new cases this morning. So certainly fewer than 20 cases per day is something we want to see on a firmly consistent basis. So as we look at the statistics from the recent weeks, we also want to show that in November, we saw 156 Everett residents under the age of 19 diagnosed with COVID-19. So obviously, this is the age group that covers our student population the most. And obviously, it has, it was higher in November. So it certainly does give us pause, especially when compared with the more modest figures from previous months. So again, we're hoping that that will also, you know, flatten out over the coming weeks. So next, as we explore ways to best bring back more students for in-person teaching and learning, the district is planning on utilizing the Binax Now rapid testing. So these tests are being made available at no cost to Massachusetts schools through DESI and the US Department of Health and Human Services and the US Department of Defense. So the antigen test is meant to be administered to students and staff who are in our buildings and symptomatic. Results come back in 15 minutes and positive cases can then be acted on very quickly and effectively. In addition to sending a person with a positive test home, however, we will have the chance to start contact tracing right away. So that would definitely be a huge benefit. Much attention has rightfully been given to how slow tests can thwart our contact tracing efforts. This would certainly help mitigate that. And in the case of a student, it is far easier to ask them contact tracing questions as soon as a test result comes back rather than having to wait. It is important to note, however, that a negative Binax Now test is not a way to quote, "clear" someone. So in most cases, if a person showing symptoms receives a negative Binax rapid test result, they should still leave school and have a molecular test taken. Because again, this is for those who have symptoms. So even if they got a negative test and they had symptoms, they would still need to leave school to have a molecular test taken. This especially, you know, is true for someone who's showing multiple COVID symptoms. Also, this rapid test is not meant to be used on a broad scale among students and staff who are asymptomatic. But again, as we've been meeting with our health advisory group, it is, they do believe and we agree that it is beneficial to utilize every, you know, different kind of test and opportunity that is provided to us in order to make sure that those of us who are in the buildings are back safely. So our account for Binax Now will be managed by a third party. So in this next slide, you could see that Project Beacon is that third-party manager and their responsibilities will include notifying the parents, schools and the Department of Public Health about positive tests. While web-based Project Beacon is, will offer paper copies to ensure access for all families as well. The tests are scheduled to be shipped on December 8 and we have a training schedule for December 11, in which the actual test will be used. And the members of our COVID-19 Health Advisory Response Team agree that again, while I mentioned, while not perfect, Binax Now rapid testing will be an effective tool for us, one of the effective tools that we can use in order to bring back more students. So so Everett's incident rate is 8.39%, which does put us squarely in the higher risk of transmission in school range. And during the last meeting, we were asked to to talk with our health advisory about what are some metrics that we could use in order to determine when would be an appropriate time to come back? So the reason I mention this is because we're currently in the 8.39%. And what we are looking to be is in the lower risk of transmission of schools, which would be in less than 5 or 3% to 5%. So in this next slide, you'll see that these are some of the metrics or some of the guidelines that we received from our COVID-19 response team that help us to think about how we could return to schools. So again, the lack of firm dates on our reopening does not in any way indicate a lack of planning. But as cases hopefully decline, we are making the necessary preparations to open school to the greatest extent possible. So similarly, being deliberate does not mean we are reluctant. On the contract tray, we feel that we have developed a clear sense of what we need to see and what we need to do in order to welcome our students back into our classrooms. So first, the metrics that we have tailored are to Everett. So this means a test positivity rate below 5% for three or four consecutive weeks, with the preferable number being closer to 3%. As again, this aligns with the CDC guidelines that I showed in the previous slide that would then put us in the lower risk of transmission in schools. Along with this, the daily incidence rate per 100,000 will need to be stable or decreasing over the same three or four-week timeframe. So that is what we are looking for. As we monitor the numbers, we will move ahead with preparing our buildings and equipping our staff from improving the ventilation and air quality, like I mentioned, to ensuring we have all enough PPP on hand and to configuring our classes to facilitate the learning and the social distancing. So we are being very proactive in every way possible. Closely associated with this is the creation of robust health and safety protocols and processes that in-person learning requires. So as we discussed earlier, this does include testing and contact tracing. And again, we're exploring, you know, every option in order to not just use the symptomatic test, but to figure out how we can use other kinds of tests as well. Lastly, we will consider all significant external factors to make sure that our community is positioned to safely support the return of students. So at this time, I will take any questions before we move to item number two on the agenda, which will be discussing participation in winter athletics.
Ms. Cadella. Millie, you're on mute.
You're on mute, Ms. Cadella.
Jill, okay, there I am. I bet you wish you could do that to me all the time, my God. Okay. Okay, here we go again.
A point of zoom preference. You can keep your computer muted, but if you like to talk, instead of talking back and forth with the mute button, just press on the spacebar.
Sam, you taught us that. Thank you. Thanks, Frank. So through you, Mr. Chairman, through the superintendent. One question, and that has to do with synchronous versus asynchronous. Have, I know we have synchronous. Are we offering asynchronous training on a case-by-case basis or anything like that? To any of our students?
So you mean the asynchronous learning?
Learning, yes.
So our current schedules are a combination of both. So within the schedule and within a class period, there's a certain amount of time that is synchronous and then a certain amount of time that is asynchronous. And instead of changing the schedule itself, what we determine may be a better option is to keep the schedule as is and just potentially within that class period, increase some of the synchronous time so that there's more synchronous versus asynchronous. Right now, the way we've done it is there's guidance that was provided to all teachers at the beginning of the year based on age level to what is appropriate synchronous versus asynchronous time based on, you know, the age level of the student. This is also how we've created the schedules themselves. But even within each block, you have some amount of synchronous and asynchronous time. And so instead of changing the overall schedule, what we're suggesting instead is, you know, if more synchronous time is, is, you know, desired, that instead they keep the students on for a longer period of time. This is more especially to the case in grades six through 12, because in the younger grades, grade K to five, most of it is synchronous. So depending on the grade level that you're at, you're seeing already a different combination of synchronous versus asynchronous time. So in some cases in grades, there actually may, this may not mean much of a change at all.
Okay, then, on that same subject, my mind was going more towards high schoolers because I know so many of our high school students have to work. And I was just thinking, maybe that's part of the absence problems because they have to leave at a certain time. And if we could offer them, and again, on a case-by-case basis, because it's not meant for everybody, you have to be very disciplined to do this. So if it were offered on a case-by-case basis, that may help some of our students, even even some of our EL students that maybe would feel more comfortable doing it at their leisure rather than at a specific time with everyone else.
I think that's a great point. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for listening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Madam Superintendent. Two quick questions. How are we using the survey data by school? And to, you know, because each school leader has autonomy to do what they need. But how are we using that to kind of bolster, maybe in one school, there's more pronounced challenges versus another school?
So yes, that's a great question. So we actually met with our school principals this past week. And this is when we were really discussing, because as I mentioned at the previous school committee meeting, we were really looking as we moved into second quarter, when we knew that everybody was, you know, originally gearing up for hybrid learning, that we wanted to sort of enhance the e-learning that we had provided, right? And then that we had heard from teachers that, you know, they did want more synchronous learning or, you know, many of them felt that they needed more time with their students. And then as we were discussing that, and then we got these results back, we were able to look at them with all of the principals. And by that time, principals had started to float the idea of potential changes in schedules to teachers, to parents, and had started to receive a lot of feedback that wasn't even in the surveys, a lot of, you know, emails, phone calls, anecdotal. So they were actually able to, we shared this data with them and they were able to share with us their data because we asked them to come with any feedback that they had gotten. And that's how we then originally determined that again, while we are providing the principals with some level of autonomy. And again, it really depends on program and grade level because we're seeing different things in in different areas. We still wanted to make sure that whatever decision we made was normed enough so that people weren't seeing huge discrepancies from grade to grade or school to school. So there is some level of flexibility, but there will be, you know, a good deal of continuity as well. So there's like a specific range of flexibility that we're providing.
I think part of it too is, you know, people see, there's been so much communication, which is wonderful. But people see like, why does that school get, why are they getting books in hand? Why is this school getting whatever it may be? So people, you know, kind of look at that. And I just think maybe that's where some of the more hard copies, they may be concentrated on one or two schools versus across the district.
That's a, that's a great point. Another way that we're still looking at this, breaking down this data as well, is by language group too. So we didn't present those slides, but we were looking to it by language group. Are there specific trends that we're seeing in social emotional learning or in, and you know, what is their greatest need? Does that, did we have any noticeable trends there too? So there are a number of different ways that we can look at this data. And I think that's, that's a great point too about the the hard, the packets and the the box.
And then just my second question, and this might be a little further down the road, but I think it's important to think about is our undercredit juniors and seniors that, you know, as they approach graduation, how can we? This is actually a positive thing in that way, in that technology. We can utilize that to get them to that full-credit diploma. But I also worry about them disengaging during this period or if they feel like they're, they're not going to just kind of taking a step back as we head into the second part of the year. So just wanted to bring that up. I know that it's probably a little further down the road, but I think it's important to keep front of mind.
Absolutely. In fact, we do have some thoughts on this and some plans in place that we weren't ready to share just yet, but I know that there's work being done at the high school and we will definitely be bringing that to this group to to discuss where we are with the, with the number of seniors we're looking at, the number of students we're looking at that are in that case and how we're, we're supporting them.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Superintendent, thank you very much for the presentation. I do have a question regarding the in-person learning that we are having now. Can you give us an update? Is that the Devens and the Webster where we have kids in the building?
And the Lafayette.
Oh, and the Lafayette. All right. So it's approximately how many kids that we have, like about 100?
Yeah, or less than that, actually. So it's just a couple of classes. We did offer the opportunity. So for example, at the Devens, you know, all students did have the opportunity to come back, but not all of them chose to. So we do have the opportunity provided, but not everybody, again, depending on comfortability level, decided to take advantage of that and they then still are in remote learning. And I can bring to you the, I had it in a previous presentation, that exact numbers per class and and per school, so you can get a breakdown of that.
Okay, and plan to expand to other schools?
So there is, and we were actually, because we went for one program in particular. We had gone from kindergarten to first grade and our goal was looking at second grade. You know, so we've been working with the ETA, we've been working with our teachers and who've been incredibly, you know, wonderful. Many of them are, have volunteered to come back. I will say that it is a little more challenging as our numbers have spiked up to, you know, to sort of recruit. In that way, we do still have teachers who are very interested, you know, despite everything. And they, of course, based on the, the classes that they teach, you know, some of them are more easily taught in person. And so they definitely have a desire to come back. But again, we're weighing all of the, the numbers right now as we expand. But yes, that is definitely something we want to do. And simultaneously to us thinking about the, trying to provide more classes to come back for in-person learning, we're also, and we'll talk about this more, thinking about the clubs, the extracurricular activities and how we can start getting those into our schools as well.
Awesome. All right. Great. Thank you.
Ms. Murray.
So I had two questions. One was about clubs and activities, which you said that you're going to discuss. So I can hold that question if that's better for you. But the other was about any conversations that have moved forward regarding CTE learning and coming back for those specific classes for the high school kids and how we're factoring that into our post-holiday plan for return.
So same thing, we've been in conversations with the different teachers, coaches, club advisors, and trying to work with all of them individually to see how we can bring them back in. The, you know, I think we were making some better traction before, but then the numbers just kind of really spiked. And so I think it's put us in a state where we're, you know, these numbers, the last few days, I think, have been much more promising. And so hopefully we'll be able to begin those conversations again. Thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Superintendent, thank you for the update. Just as an aside, I can't keep this to myself any longer. My niece teaches in Alaska. And next week, they're giving her the option of getting a vaccine. So hopefully, things aren't as dire as they seem right now. So so again, just something I wanted to throw out there. I know, I know we're a long way from Alaska, but it is in the United States. We're not, not in Great Britain, so. All right. Back to you, Madam Superintendent.
So thank you. So item number two is requesting approval to participate in winter sports. So reshare again the slide deck. So, you know, we've been thinking about, you know, the clubs and the activities, but then also the winter sports. And so this is particular to the winter sports because of course those, we're talking about the And so this is particular to the winter sports, because of course those, we're talking about the having to be in person portion of it in the actual practice and play. For the clubs and activities, we are still able to, we are, have, you know, started to send out those acceptances. And those groups will be meeting. So it's a couple of slides before. Great. So let's see. So, you know, this, you know, we're, we're actually, we're asking for approval for this and we do have a recommendation. But we really are interested in discussion on this. What we're speaking to specifically is girls and boys varsity and junior varsity basketball and hockey. So we will cover the specifics in a moment, but I did want to say a few things right off the top. First, I am very comfortable with the protocols established by the members of the Greater Boston League. Which does include our athletic director and girls' basketball head coach Tammy Turner, who is at this meeting and will be available for any questions. The GBL has developed a plan that considers the best advice from the Massachusetts Interscholactic Athletic Association. As well as the more specific considerations of Everett, Malden, Medford, Revere, and Somerville. So this plan was shared with our COVID-19 response team this past Friday, and the members actually did express their support. Thirdly, Ms. Turner informs us that our winter coaches are on board with this proposal and are eager to make the best of what we all know is a far. Then far less than ideal situation. So lastly, this is consistent with our additive approach. We have, as I mentioned before, put a priority on trying to introduce as classes and activities that are smaller in scope, that align with our safety priorities. And which do have a reasonable opportunity for sustainability. And we do believe that the athletics plan meets this criteria. So here in this slide, it provides an overview of the announcements and determinations made by the MIAA and the GBL since the school year started. So some things to consider as you look at the slide. So the Greater Boston League canceled its fall season, which was consistent with the early MIA determination that cities in red should not play sports. So our traditional fall season has been moved to what is being called Fall Two, which begins on February 22nd. The winter season begins on December 14th with two notable exceptions. Indoor track will be a Fall Two sport instead of winter sport. And wrestling is being considered for the spring season, which begins on April 26th. Because wrestling is considered a higher risk sport due to its frequent close contact in an indoor setting, it was not approved for the winter. Hopefully wrestling, however, will be included in the spring slate. So as we look at just basketball and hockey. You know, we've worked directly with the local department of public health to make this recommendation to you this evening. However, you know, these, our numbers and our situation here in Everett is constantly changing. So there have been updates even since our last conversation. So I do believe this will be, you know, a robust conversation. However, these were the outline guidelines that we had. You know, sort of. Gotten from GBL as well as come up with some on our own. So first, we have to stress that this is for players only. As a city in the red zone, the GPL, GBL has made the decision that there will be no spectators at games. And that does include, unfortunately, family members and cheerleaders. So we do, you know, totally understand their decision and we agree and are working to ensure that we have the games recorded. So that we can post them online and on ECTV. So we are trying, you know, here in Everett to make sure that even though that, you know. Is an unfortunate piece of news that we could still potentially make sure that families and friends are able to view the games. For basketball, there will be 15 players maximum on the varsity team and then the junior varsity teams for both boys and girls. So that means we will have no more than 60 student athletes playing basketball this winter. Everyone will wear masks at all times unless there is a designated area for athletes to take a mask break. There will be no locker rooms, seats on the bench will be assigned and will adhere to the six feet of social distancing. Further, you know, excessive cheering and yelling from the bench and sideline areas is even being limited. Social distancing will be practiced on buses to and from the games. No players will be allowed to play for both a JV and a varsity team, which is a practice that is relatively common during our traditional seasons. But will not be for this upcoming season. While the winter season does start on December 15th, any competitive games will not start until the second week of January. Again, as we all kind of wait for that after the holidays, just to make sure everything is safe for us to begin. During practice, players will participate in drills and activities in cohorts. And games will only be played once a week on Saturdays. And finally, there will be no state tournament, tournaments. Switching to hockey, the same rules mostly are in effect, but there is a maximum limit of 20 players per team. Social distancing will also be required on, on the benches. And our athletic department is actually in the process of determining how to best facilitate this at the Allied Veterans Rink in Everett. The GBL is prepared, if necessary, to host all games at one location. So this has come to be known in the sports world as a bubble. So for example, Medford High School could be designated as the host school for all girls' basketball games. And I bring up this contingency just to show that a great deal of care and attention is going into this plan that they're making. It is also worth mentioning that we are seeing the benefits of the effort to reunite the Greater Boston League. So organizing sports schedules without being a member of the league, which is very difficult under any circumstances, would have been that much harder during the pandemic. Nor would we want a situation where teams have to travel any farther than absolutely necessary. So my congratulations to Tammy Turner, our coaches, the members of our school committee and our colleagues in Malden, Medford, Revere, and Somerville. It is great to see, you know, the letters GBL back on the sports landscape where they belong. So, you know, at this time, I would like to open this up for any questions and discussion. And I would also like to request to invite up our athletic director, Ms. Turner, as well as Sabrina Ferricano. You know, I spoke to Sabrina right before this meeting. And based on, you know, some of the numbers in Everett, I know that she too is a little. Wondering if, what, what is the next right move for us? So I didn't know if we could request for them to come up if they have any extra words to share and then perhaps have a discussion.
Make a motion to bring Ms. Turner and Ms. Ferricano. Ferricano, right? I have the excuse, English is my second language, so I always have the excuse to ask.
I'll second that motion.
A motion had been made and seconded to bring forth Ms. Turner, Ms. Ferricano. Roll call, please, Eddie.
Ms. Lambert. Yes. Still on Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarnie?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes, eat me affirmative. Welcome, Ms. Turner, Ms. Ferricano. Would. Timmy, would you like to speak first, just on your thoughts, add anything to what our superintendent has stated?
I just would like you to all know that the GBL ADs and athletic trainers have been working since the fall, since we were denied. The capability of even trying to play in the fall. And we know from the spring to the athletes not being able to play that. We've been doing everything we can because we know that it's the social and emotional well-being for the kids too. So we've been doing everything we possibly can to just help them in that way. And that we know that safety and well-being for the students is the utmost importance. So we just want you to know that athletics knows that too.
Ms. Ferricano, anything you would like to add?
Yes, thank you. And thank you to the superintendent and to Ms. Turner for all of your effort. And all of the plans that were put into place. And just to go back a little bit further, like the superintendent had mentioned in regards to numbers of cases that we haven't seen. And we've been working together and monitoring, we've seen 156 cases in the zero to 19 age range. So that is a little bit concerning just for the month of November. And then also within the last few days with the cases spiking in Everett. Going forward, I believe that at, at this point, we really would have to look at the numbers. And that they're going to continue to, to rise with the increase of the holidays coming and into January. As we watch that two-week period after the holidays. So I really think that at this point, we really have to look at those numbers. And unfortunately, it's not something that. It's not good news as, as far as we, we want kids to, we want kids to get back into school. We want kids to get back to their normal routine. But as far as the spread potentially, it could be a bigger, a bigger concern. When they are playing in, in close contact with each other. And we are seeing household spreads. So if the child is in contact with a parent or household member that has it. And really wants to play a sport and does go to that basketball game or hockey game. There is that potential of exposure at, at, at the games as well. Even though that the parents aren't going, but if student, if the student does attend.
Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I had two questions, but Ms. Ferricano, as you brought that up. I, I heard from a lot of parents this weekend about, and they're participating in recreational hockey leagues. Have, have you looked at transmission in that space? Has that been a big source? Because that's the one indoor sport that people have consistently been playing.
So we, we continue to look at contact tracing and we continue to try to determine if there's any clusters. The, the issue is that the information is only, is only as good as the individual discloses. So if they don't disclose that they were at, they were playing hockey. We're unable to link that to a specific cluster. So sometimes individuals don't want to disclose that information. We can only go based off of what they tell us. And we have, we have not received any of that information.
Okay. Um, thank you. And my second question, Ms. Turner, what about tryouts? Like, because it is a very small team, both basketball and hockey is actually smaller too, right? So how would tryouts be handled or would it be? A fresh.
Well, that's okay. I've, I've had freshmen on my varsity team before. So I, we were going to actually have to do it with, in certain days. Because we don't know how many freshmen would actually try out for varsity. Well, it would be JV and varsity. We, well, we were hoping for JV and varsity. If we could only have varsity, we could only have varsity. But so I was, I talked to the coaches and that we would have it in stages, like freshman could be on Monday. And so that we'd have any freshman that wanted to try out and then sophomores on Tuesday. Because when we do cohorts, we're going to do cohorts. So we are going to keep them as separate as possible. If the boys have practice on Monday, the girls would have practice on Tuesday. Because we are going to keep them separate, make sure it can get cleaned, the gym can get cleaned out. Make sure the basketballs are cleaned. I mean, they use different basketballs, but they're usually stored in the same storage closet. So make sure they get cleaned out before their next practice. So it would be, it would be a process of getting through tryouts so that every kid that wants to try out has the capability of trying out.
And sorry, one more. I, I read through all that MIAA and then the GBL guidelines. So they're extensive and just for anybody watching to understand that. A lot of thought and preparation went into this for the kids. So that's the reason why, you know, I'm leaning towards this being a yes. But I just want to understand, you know, that not only the coaches, which I, I. I want to make sure that the students have the right expectations and training and support. Because students, you know, that's. They may not necessarily see the impact of a chain virus. And we, I mean, there are plenty of adults that maybe don't either. But where the students are the ones that are participating, just whatever we can do to, to make sure they understand the importance of. It's not worth risking your family or somebody else's family. Because now you're putting someone else's family at risk if you don't follow the guidelines we set out. So that would be my only piece, but thank you.
I think, Ms. Cardello, then I'll see you simply next.
Yeah, and my first question is to Ms. Turner, Athletic Director. Hi, Tammy, how you doing? Have we had any practices ongoing during this time at all?
No, we have not been allowed.
Workout sessions, anything like that?
No, we haven't been allowed.
Okay, when would you anticipate, if, if we go forward with this? When would you anticipate all of that starting between the tryouts, the workouts, the actual practicing and so forth?
Well, the MIAA is allowing it us to start December 14th. So that could start. We would have to do registration and the kids have to get the physicals and, and everything. So paperwork wise, we'd have to get everything in. But depending on this, this group and we could start December 14th is as early as we could start.
Okay, so that would be more the preparation for it, during the physicals, the paperwork, the tries, all that. I'm actually talking, going into, we're looking well after the holidays, correct? Like in the beginning of next year?
Like games against Medford Mall, that, that would not start until January 11th is the first one that we had scheduled. Because we did not want to do interleague play until two weeks after the holidays. Because we wanted to make sure we had that two week. So we did not, we did not.
Which are our numbers out where they need to be? That can be adjusted as well, correct?
Oh, yes, we could, right. Because it's, because it's just GBL we're playing, we can, we can adjust it. However, like we are very, the ADs have been working together and we're very flexible. And we know that we are just hopeful, hopeful that we can get to play. So we can, we can push it however we need to push it.
Okay, thank you. I'm listening a lot to Sabrina on this and totally respect, you know, her input. And I know she's been doing this for a while and she's been guiding us quite well through this whole thing since last year. I'm just thinking, if we went ahead and approved this now and then needed to tweak the dates based on numbers. Gets better, we move forward. If it doesn't get better, at least we have the wheels in motion. So that when it does get better, and in my heart, I believe, even though we're not Alaska, as the chairman says, I do believe this is going to get better. And that would be ready to go with it. And I, and I hate to see us continue to delay things and procrastinate if we can move forward in a positive direction for our kids. Thank you.
Ms. Sarnie.
Thank you. Can you explain, do we have anything in place about temperature check before they enter the bus? If they go traveling or enter the arena or the courts? Like making sure the temperature before they enter any of the buildings?
From the MIA standpoint and like the COVID checklist that we have. Temperature check is not necessarily reliable anymore. So we were, that was not one of the checklist that we have because it's not necessarily reliable. If. I know, I know that Sabrina's on here. So if she wants to, I mean, if she recommends that we do that, I'll, I'll do that for every game. I can do that. But I just know that it's not as recommended as it used to be.
I, I was going to suggest temperature check because I know where I work, we walk in the door with, with check immediately. And we're not allowed in the building if anyone has a fever. I know people can be a carrier even without a temperature, but it's another extra precaution. So that's a suggestion that I would make.
I would be willing to do that. They would not be allowed into practice or game. I can do that. Not a problem.
The other thing is, do we have a waiver also signed by the parents allowing them to play?
That's part of any, any year. It's a parent consent form.
But I think maybe, maybe the wording to add with regarding COVID because the next year precaution for us. And also the parents are aware of the precaution, what could happen as well.
Okay.
And the other, sanitize, I believe, is there anything about sanitizing in between, say, basketball? Because they're going to be touching the ball. Because they're gonna be touching the ball at each time they go out to the court.
I have to, I actually have to have four different basketballs for each quarter, they have a new basketball. There has to be a sanitary sanitation station at the, at the table. When they go in, they have to sanitize, when they come out, they have to sanitize. I have the whole checklist of game day and practice day that I have to have organized, oh, yes.
Oh, great, okay. I I mean, I do support that the kids get back playing and, you know, and precaution take. You know, as what you stated, so, but I do believe the temperature check would be an extra precaution for us, I believe, to take as well. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Parker, then Ms. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your to Ms. Turner. First of all, congratulations for bringing the GBL back with Lynn Classical and Lynn English with all the teams. I think starting next year, and that's just fantastic. You know, we really need to bring that Urban League back to Massachusetts. Just two questions, first regarding ice hockey, while we call it boys hockey, it's actually still boys and girls, correct?
Yes, the girls are allowed to play because we don't have girls hockey, yes.
Do you foresee any waiver being asked to allow eighth graders of either sex to participate this year?
I've had, I I asked for one from the district. I just didn't, I haven't put it in all the way yet and asked for approval, because I didn't know if we were going to actually need it. And so I haven't, I haven't actually put it in yet, but they, they, the district level knows it, the MIA district level knows it. But I just didn't move forward with it yet, because I didn't know if we were gonna play.
Okay, and lastly, was there any consideration given to girls volleyball? That is a way to score, right?
That's gonna be played in fall, too.
Fall, too, okay, thank you. All right, thanks for your time.
Sparrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Turner, thank you as well, and thanks Superintendent for sending that plan. That was very well detailed, I read the entire document. And I feel totally comfortable with approving this plan. Ms. Turner, do you or perhaps the Superintendent, do you have all the PPEs that you need for this? If, like, do we have masks that if students need or players need? Sanitizers, like, is that anything that you need? Which, of course, this will be the Superintendent, but if it is anything that the school committee needs to. Think about and and approve, and these will, of course, would go through the Superintendent. But in other words, do you have the PPEs needed to start this program?
I didn't know if she was, if Sabrina was gonna talk, or if I was gonna talk. Yeah, I've been, I talked with Kim Si today and talking with Steve Bond, and we are gonna discuss that. But there was, there was masks that were ordered. And however, I did find out through the MIA town halls last week, last, all last week in the evening, they had town halls. That multiple masks should be offered, should be switched out in between quarters and whatnot, because once they get. The moisture in them, they're not as effective, so I do need to reach out to Steve Bond and find out how many we have in stock. The kids will probably provide some of their own to feel more comfortable and whatnot, but I do need to reach out to Steve Bond today. I mean, tomorrow, I talked to Kim Si today about that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Superintendent, I believe.
Yeah, and just one thing that I would add is that, you know, unfortunately, we were supposed to go back to hybrid November sixteenth. So we do have PPE supplies that we're all ready to go for that. And so we, we definitely have stuff on hand that we had originally anticipated that we would use to be coming back hybrid. Of course, we still will make sure that we are fully stocked once we do go to hybrid, but we have stuff on hand right now.
Excellent, all right, thank you, thank you both.
Ms. Murray.
So I also read all the documents that were put in for sports. And I was extremely impressed with the plan, and I feel rather comfortable moving forward myself. As the mom of an athlete who really needs to be in her sport, or else she is very difficult to live with, quite frankly. I was really relieved to see the detail that the plan went into and all the things it considered, including. Changing masks out when they got sweaty or damp, et cetera, et cetera. How strict will you be with these guidelines? For example, mandatory flu shots, mandatory masking at all times. I know the sport that my daughter plays, she's expected to have a mask on when she's doing back handsprings on a balance beam. So I have very little patience for people who say that their kid can't wear a mask while they're dribbling a basketball. I expect the kids to be fully masked if we move forward with this. I expect all the procedures to be handled, and I just want reaffirmation from you. That you envision this movement forward with the same strictness to protocol that I do.
Absolutely, I've talked to the coaches and I've let them know that I will be at each practice, making sure that the masks are on. And I have no problem shutting down the practice if the masks, if the kids aren't following that. Because if one thing happens, then the whole season shuts down. So I don't want one kid not following the rules affect the whole, whole winter sports seasons for all the kids. So my coaches are on board, they know that, and they know what it's at stake for the emotional well being of the rest of the kids. So I, I have no, no worries about that.
Thank you.
From the chair, thank you, Tammy and Sabrina. I guess my, my concern is the opposite, I mean, I'm, I'm passionate about education, I'm passionate about sports, there's nothing. I'm more passionate about than the combination of the two. I guess my concern, and I, I go to Dana. A hockey player wearing a mask under his mask. I mean, I'm concerned Dana about your daughter being on a balance beam with something that might fall over her eyes. That might affect her, getting her more injured than the, what we're trying to prevent here. And I'm thinking of a hockey player with a mask under his mask or her mask. You know, sometimes when we try to protect, I, I, I fear what we're doing is potentially causing more harm here. The thoughts in terms of that, in terms of, again, I understand about the COVID. But, okay, basketball, you're wearing the mask, okay. But a hockey player skating full speed into a corner or something like that. Dana's daughter on a balance beam with a mask that could flip over their eyes, I don't know. That makes me more concerned than the virus, I mean, what's the MIAA's thoughts about that? Are there special masks that I'm not aware of that are going to prevent something like that from happening?
Well, the MIAA, actually with gymnastics, the MIAA said that when you're on your app, the apparatus, if you are actually by yourself. That you, you actually can take them, like, if you're on the balance beam and you're doing your event. You can take it off, but as soon as you dismount and you land, you need to put it back on. Maybe at practice, if there's too many people around, you can't, but if you're actually at your event. Yeah, no, because I would be scared of that, too. When you're doing, I mean, I just get scared walking on a balance beam, much less.
But in terms of, like I said, my thought just went to hockey, you're already wearing a cage. And now you're gonna have something else on your face.
They have to wear a mask even when they're playing.
Wow, that's, you're playing goalie, you're gonna be wearing a mask under your mask. Wow, wow, that's.
They want to play sports, they're gonna wear a mask under their mask.
I understand, and right now, like I said, I'm looking at my, my grandchildren are a little bit ways from playing. But I'm, I said, I, I just have a concern about that in terms of safety. Flip side is, I just want to be clear, Tammy, is it? The way the superintendent presented, is it one game a week, is that the, is that the plan? Or is it, did I read that wrong?
No, so one game a week so that we're only. Cross contaminating with one school per week, so that hopefully, like, all goes well, no one cross contaminated anything. And then we do another whole week before we play another team, so there'll only be about ten games. The whole season.
Okay, now, again, I know there's no state tournament.
Right.
If all goes well, is there talk of like a potential league tournament that takes place at the end?
Or league title or league tournament, yes. That's what we're discussing, yes.
Very good, very good, thank you guys, thank you for your time. Ms. Murray, sorry, back to you.
So I had another quick question about testing the athletes, since we're gonna have that lag time between actual games. And hopefully, we're gonna be looking for any symptoms or any issues in our athletes, of course. But since we will still be at least partially remote. And some private industries have expressed interest in funding testing. We just had some information from the superintendent about testing for students. Is there a way we can maybe think about rolling out some testing for athletes? So that we're increasing the likelihood that we're keeping families and students safe, both for our own community and the communities that our kids will be interacting with?
Yes, that is one of the top things we're exploring right now, to your point about, or to, I can't even remember. About bringing, are we still exploring to even with the rising numbers, bringing classes back? This is sort of the number one way we're thinking we're gonna be able to do it. Is through, you know, the symptomatic, but also asymptomatic options for testing, so that we can at least make sure we can sustain what we, who we already have in the buildings and and keep ramping up. So we would start with athletes, e-learning centers, staff in buildings, and then hopefully ramp up from there, so we can bring more people into the buildings.
Thanks.
Anybody else, last, last thing from the chair, Tammy, Sabrina. As an official, the biggest issue we have in football. Is with the kids trying to wear tinted visors like the guys in the pros. And, you know, there've been people who's, you know, their parents have gone to specialists. And they want to show up with the doctor's note that says it's okay for them to wear the tinted visor. Which is absolutely verboten, we can't allow it, because then we can't look in to see their eyes in case of the potential for a concussion. Is there a way that someone gets, whether they have asthma or some other condition or something like that? Is this across the board, you must wear the. You know, the face mask, or else you can't play. Is there, has the MIAA thought about the people that go out? And they always seem to find a way around this through, you know, hey, my son or daughter has asthma, she can't play. If she's wearing a face, she won't be able to breathe or anything like that. Has there been any anticipation of that kind of stuff coming down the pike?
No, they have different masks that they have, that they can, that they've okayed to actually let them. The gator ones, they have, they don't necessarily, haven't approved the gator ones unless they're two ply. But they have certain ones, Sabrina, I don't know the names of the ones that actually, they have like the little filter thing. But they have okayed that for, because some, some of the parents with kids with asthma have said those help them breathe better. But no, all kids have to wear a mask.
Make a motion to excuse the, the guests of customary thanks.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to excuse our guests with the customary thanks. Roll call vote, please, Addie.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes, and thank you.
Ms. Cardello? Ms. Murray?
Yes, and thank you both for coming and spending time with us tonight.
Ms. Lambert? Yes. Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes, and thank you both coming.
And Mr. Abaze? You're muted. You're muted, Mr. Abaze.
Yes, and thank you ladies for joining us and for all the hard work you did in preparation for this, appreciate it.
Thank you all for having us.
Thank you, so Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the Superintendent's request to participate in our Winter Olympics. Or athletics, Olympics one day.
A second.
Winter Olympics, is that, and that was seconded?
That was second for one day, right now is winter athletics.
All right, motion made and seconded to approve the participation in the winter athletics. Roll call vote, please, Addie.
Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello? Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Yes, in the affirmative, the motion passes.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Tam.
Thank you so much, Tammy and Sabrina, and also Ms. Cardella, to your point, I think it's a really great idea for us to start moving forward. But to continue this conversation, so I appreciate this initial approval. But we will keep you updated at every single meeting, we'll be working with Sabrina very closely, as well as the health advisory team. So if anything, you know, were to change, in the same way that we give COVID updates every school committee meeting. We will, I commit to making sure that we provide academics or updates on where we are with our winter sports.
I know you will, and thank you for that, and thank you to both Sabrina and Tammy for everything, thank you.
So item number three is a request of approval of holiday activities. So, you know. As is normally usual, we would have a lot of holiday activities at this time in the school year. You know, and these requests normally do get put on the school committee agenda per, for each school. These requests have already started to be submitted by our parent organizations, by several schools. But then also by community members who typically are involved in the schools in one way or another, in in some kind of holiday festivities. So before bringing specific activities to all of you, I wanted to discuss holiday activities just holistically to see where the committee is and how, or if we're, we're feeling comfortable with some of these kinds of things moving forward. Again, under very strict guidelines. So on this next slide, when thinking about our holiday activities. Our emphasis really, again, is on the social and emotional health of our students, and especially our families in need. So we are exploring contact free events that respect the COVID nineteen metrics that we just shared with you. Of course, we do not want to proceed with anything that makes you uncomfortable, which is why we wanted to discuss this. In drafting these plans, we're trying to find a way to be able to connect with families in a manner that is safe. But that is also positive and, you know, that brings some level of normalcy to the holiday season. So some of the aspects that we are exploring include greeting attendees via computer screen and setting up, you know. A holiday drive through to provide academic supplies, such as the homework packets and books, which some families have requested anyway via our survey. We've also been exploring promoting a, you know, a friendly door decorating contest that families can participate in remotely. You know, so we're thinking about a lot of the activities that we even did for senior week, so some of these, you know, more social media driven activities. But definitely, you know, something that has been brought up is drive through events at schools or even potentially district wide. That could include music, lights, and even a distribution of. um, at schools or even potentially district-wide that could include music, lights, and even a distribution of, you know, small items, um, school supplies, or even gifts, um, that have been donated, maybe, you know, generally there are toy drives that are happening. So the same kinds of things, but, but with a drive-through distribution. Um, so again, this would be, we're considering them both school level, but also, um, in, in the school parking lots. And again, aiming to eliminate contact, uh, but then also thinking about potentially something district-driven as well. And it is important to note that any plan that we would be putting into place would need to be approved by the local Board of Health. So we would be working with Sabrina very closely on it prior to offering any of these activities for students or families. But before moving forward with anything or any further discussion, I just wanted to open it up to this group to see if this is something that, you know, everybody feels okay about considering where we are currently.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think if we do something that it is, uh, outside and socially distant and something that is not big, I believe is doable and possible to do. Uh, I'll give an example of that book distribution that the superintendent, uh, brought today, uh, in that, I think it was the beginning of her presentation, they were at the parley. Um, so we were outside, waiting for the kids who are, uh, in our e-learning center, uh, to leave. We had hand sanitizers, we had like tables that were more than six feet apart. And the kids came when their parents were waiting for them. And they came now in line, distant, they were masks, and then we hand each book inside of a plastic bag to each one of them, their parents now grabbed them, took pictures and, and they left. This whole thing outside. Uh, so it was fully safe. Uh, so if we do something similar to that, um, I, I believe it's possible to do, even if you have, you know, Santa, like in a parking lot and quickly, uh, I, I, I totally believe that it is possible to do. The book distribution was pretty successful because of the way that we, that we put it together. So, thank you.
Ms. Murray?
I would say, um, personally, for the sake of equity as well as safety, that anything we put forth would need to be as strictly adhered to as the, uh, Greater Boston League sports adherence. Um, I think it's only fair. I think it's only reasonable. I think if we believe that those are safe measures to take with our athletes, then they should be the safe measures we take with our clubs. And they should be the safe measures that we take with our community in general in terms of how we deal with kids. So I felt really comfortable reading through the documentation that was provided for the athletes. And if something similar was followed in terms of extracurricular activities or holiday events, I would probably feel pretty comfortable moving forward with that.
Mr. Parker?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think the obvious blueprint for any event would be, uh, what we did for their, uh, graduation. Um, and since then, the mayor's hosted a number of successful events throughout the city. Um, you know, the Halloween giveaway down at River Grove Park comes to mind. So I think, um, you know, the, the powers that be have experience in pulling off such an event. Um, I also like the fact that, that there's, there's buy-in from the Board of, Board of Health. Um, has been, so I would fully support, um, any holiday activity that, uh, each school building uh, group would, uh, like to put on for their, uh, for the families.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we, we're hosting an event, a citywide event on Sunday, I believe, December 20th, at the, the parking lot at the high school, and we invite all of you to participate with us. Uh, I believe, uh, Ms. Turner and a bunch of the children are, um, already participating with us. They did some toy drives. Um, forget the group of kids, the, the kids that also volunteer at food pantries, my Coney may, you may not know the name of the group. Um, they've done some toy drives themselves. We have plenty of toys. Uh, we have, we, we have fulfilled all our orders for our family. So we'll have tons of toys that we can actually even help if you want to do individual, uh, drive-throughs at the different schools. Um, so if we want to all coordinate, Superintendent and I can coordinate, or, you know, if you, you all want to participate, love to have you participate on the one at the high school. Um, we, Sabrina's going to be there, we're having all, we have a, you know, we have a professional organization coming in, doing all the decorations, and Santa Claus will be there and but love to have you all help us with that event and, um, the ambassadors, yes, thank you, Sam. Um, but if you want to do it at the, at the schools, we'd love to help you. If you, if you want us to help, uh, at the, uh, at the middle schools, we'd love to help. And we have, uh, like I said, we have plenty of toys to, uh, to, to distribute and we'd help with decorations and, but you, I mean, you have some of the greatest people when it comes to that, I mean, Amanda and you know, the thing I was going to ask, are we going to do, um, not, not to get something, but is Amanda going to do the, the decorations at, um, Snake Hill? Do you know, do we, Superintendent?
Um, I actually don't know. They did ask if they were allowed to, and I said, yes, is again,
Yes.
feel comfortable doing it. So I said, yes, so I don't, I
Yeah, yeah, please.
If they want to, so.
Oh, good, good. All right. Cause I'm going to call off the, I, I was going to have a company do, come in and do it, but I'd rather have, I'd rather have them do it because they, they do a great job. So, uh, excellent. Um, but yeah, so we have, we have Santa, uh, at the, at the high school drive-through. We have a great event that day. Love for you. I'll get you the flyer. Uh, if you want to do some individual schools and you want us to help, uh, we'd love to help.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. Uh, Ms. Murray?
Um, I was just going to latch on to the mayor's brilliant idea of perhaps spreading this out to some of the other schools. Um, it may also tamp down on any rush that would happen at the high school that day if there were multiple sites, especially after we've seen the lines for COVID testing and the lines for the food bank. There's no reason to believe that there won't also be lines for toy drives. So if parents knew that there would be toy drives at their individual elementaries on top of the high school, um, it might also make people a little bit more patient and cut down on the crowds at possible events like these, especially in a time when so many people need so, so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lambert?
I, I just wanted to add, I, I think doing it in individual schools because it's as much about community and building that school community that I think so many of our young people are missing this year. And so kind of seeing teachers, seeing adults that they haven't seen otherwise kind of out in, um, I think those parades are fun. I, I don't even know that it necess, a toy drive is great, but just that kind of togetherness that we're missing. Um, so that's great.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Anyone, anyone else? Ms. Cardello?
That thing with the space part doesn't work every time. Works once in a while. Okay, I got it now. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I do like Dana's idea. I, I think, I think the high school is great and we have kids that we, we could even extend this. If you're saying, Mr. Mayor, that we have so many toys, we can even extend it to the charter school children to St. Anthony's, and they could be welcome to come through the high school, plus the high school kids. And then the others, I know the Kavarian, uh, had called me for donations, so I know they've been planning something. Um, but I think it, yeah, it, it can be absolute bedlam, and we might have to do it for three days straight if, if we just did it all at one school in one day. So I think the individual schools, especially where they're, you know, kind of in, in neighborhood schools too, for the most part. And, and that would be helpful to people too. So I, I just like the idea. Anything that can bring smile to our children and to our families' faces right now is so necessary. So I'm willing to help out and volunteer any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cardello. Anyone else? Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Uh, School Committeewoman Cardello, the, uh, the event on December 20th, uh, is for all, all, all children. So it doesn't matter what school they go to or, doesn't even matter if they live in everywhere. So it's, it's open to all, all kids. You know, and, and it's a drive-through, so they have to stand in cars. And they go through a maze of all different lights and decorations, and at the end, the Santa Claus that will hand them a Christmas toy.
That's perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Mr. Parker?
I make a motion to move favorable action on allowing the holiday activities for the school district.
A second.
Motion made and seconded to, uh, allow the holiday activities to proceed, the school district. Uh, roll call vote, please, Addie.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Abrazé?
Yes, in the affirmative, motion passes. Back to you, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you so much. Uh, we really, really appreciate that. And yes, we do have schools that have already asked, um, to have these events, so we will definitely give them the go-ahead and then support other schools in doing so. And yes, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be wonderful if we could coordinate efforts, and I, I don't know if we could maybe have a light show at other places, but if we could kind of, um, maybe disseminate to other schools as well, then maybe we could keep the, the crowd control down as well. But we'll work with you guys. Um, that would be amazing. Thank you so much. So item number four, uh, is request the approval of the addendum to the existing contract with Malden Transportation. Uh, this addendum allows for the district to continue to pay Malden in anticipation of full services coming back by paying them 60% of actual special education transportation costs based on last year's invoices. So that was previously sent out to you, um, so a request for approval.
I'll make a motion for favorable action.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded for favorable action on the addendum to the Malden Transportation contract. Uh, roll call vote, please, Addie.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mr. Abrazé?
Yes, in the affirmative, motion passes.
Thank you so much. Um, item number five is a generous scholarship donation for Ms. Daniel, a graduate of the Everett High School class of 1998, who would like to commit $500. We'd like to thank, uh, Ms. Daniel for her contribution to our students and request that we accept the scholarship donation with a letter of thanks.
I'll make a motion to accept the scholarship donation with a letter of thanks.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept this scholarship donation with a letter of thanks. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Abrazé?
Yes, in the affirmative, motion passes.
Thank you so much. Item number, number six is another generous scholarship donation, this time for Ms. Brierley, who would like to honor her husband, the late Mr. Glenn G. Brierley, who worked for the Everett Police Department for 19 years, right, by presenting a student with a $1,900 scholarship. So we would like to thank Ms. Brierley for her contribution to our students and request that we accept the scholarship donation with a letter of thanks.
I'll make a motion to accept the scholarship donation and a letter of thanks.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept this scholarship donation with a letter of thanks. Uh, roll call, please, Addie.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yeah.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Abrazé?
Yes, in the affirmative, motion passes.
Thank you so much. Um, item number six is, um, sorry, item number seven, um, is another generous donation, um, from Exelon Generation. So for the third year in a row, they are donating 300 coats, uh, to the students at the, um, Lafayette School. Previously, coats have been donated to the students at the Woodyer School and the Parlin School. Uh, so the school administration would particularly like to thank Mark Rogers, uh, manager, generation, Generation Communications for working with the school department the last three years to make the, these winter coats available to our students. So we'd like to thank Mr. Rogers and Exelon for their contribution to our students and request that we accept the donation with a letter of thanks.
I'll make a motion to accept the 300 winter coats and a letter of thanks.
Roll second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the, uh, 300 winter coats with a letter of thanks to Exelon Generation. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Abrazé?
Yes, in the affirmative, motion passes.
Thank you. Item eight is another generous donation from the Everett Kiwanis Organization, who is donating hats and mittens to the Everett Public Schools. Uh, so these hats and mittens will be distributed to the principals and head teachers to distribute, to distribute to students who need them. Um, and, uh, just so that those watching at home know, the Everett Kiwanis Organization has been making this type of donation uh, for more than 15 years. So we'd like to accept, uh, the donation, um, with a letter of thanks from Everett Kiwanis.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from Everett Kiwanis for the hat and mittens in a letter of thanks.
Second the motion.
Motion made and seconded to accept the donation from the Everett Kiwanis Organization, uh, with a letter of thanks. A roll call, please, Addie.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abrazé?
Yes, in the affirmative, motion passes.
Thank you. And number nine, um, is the final donation of the evening, which is to accept from Project Lead the Way the amount of $4,650 to the Parlin School for participating in the STEM Week competition. So the money would be deposited in the Parlin School gift account. Uh, we'd like to thank Project Lead the Way for their contribution to our students um, and request that we accept the donation with a letter of thanks.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from Project Lead with a letter of thanks.
Second the motion.
A motion made and seconded to accept the, uh, donation from Project Lead the Way with a letter of thanks. Uh, roll call vote, please, Addie.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Abrazé?
Yes, in the affirmative, motion passes.
Thank you. Um, and the final item for this evening, which was originally a request for approval of a art club, actually, uh, to be attend, added to our soon activity account, is, so that actually needs to be amended. Um, it is actually the establishment of the Wave Feminist, uh, Student Organization that I was speaking about earlier. So if possible, I, uh, respectfully request that we lay that on the table for the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to lay item 10 to the next meeting.
Um, I mean, second.
Motion made and seconded to lay item 10, uh, on the table for our next meeting. Roll call vote, please, Addie.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mr. Abrazé?
Yes, in the affirmative, motion passes. Uh, Roman numeral six. Roman numeral six, item submitted by school committee members. Item one, regarding our subcommittees and the new subcommittee structure. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank all the members for all their input and hard work in taking us one step closer to getting into the 21st century as far as our rules, regulations, and committees go. So with that, I would like to make a motion that we amend chapter one of our rules, section three, subcommittees, by deleting the subcommittees as listed, finance, contract negotiations, and report ethics, legal matters, teach custodians, custodians, cafeteria, elementary schools, high school, and alternative education, athletics, physical education, and health, student activities, transportation, property, chapter 766, special education in budget. And Addie, you can find these all in our rules. I know I bet them off pretty fast. And replace them with the new committee structure, which would include the following subcommittees to take effect in January when we organize and forever after that. And those new committees would be, so we would delete and amend with finance, negotiations, student opportunity, personnel and property, rules, policy, and procedures, equity, inclusion, and diversity, budget committee of the whole, and committee of the whole. And for that, I ask for a second.
I'll second.
A motion has been made and seconded for the school committee to delete the existing standing and special subcommittee and accept the new subcommittee structure to take effect at the first organizational meeting in January 2021. Roll call please, Addie.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello? Yes, with the special thanks to Mr. Parker for all his research and dedication to doing this. Thank you, Ms. Parker. Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes. It in the affirmative, and motion passes. And I'll echo Ms. Cardello's thoughts. Frank, I know we might have done some, but this was a tremendous effort by you. Really, really appreciate it. I would have appreciated it even more if you'd done it two years ago. But having said that, thank you. It was great work.
Don't say anything, but it's one of the benefits of working remotely.
Very good. Item two, school committee respectfully requests that we shall be included in any and all home rule chatted discussions impacting the school committee. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So all of us have been following diligently the events of the past couple of weeks. We got in the home home, some of the changes and votes that have been taking place. At the previous vote, you know, we had sent the communication to the council president and asked it to be read as a record, just asking that we be allowed to participate in the conversation. So therefore, this matter, not the piece regarding the mayor servant as a voice and vote member, but the piece on national ward representation that, you know, initiated the whole debate, was moved for reconsideration by now former councilman, Pinan Napolitano. So that section will come back to the city council. And, you know, I know on one of the listening tours, there was a member of the city council who mentioned that he's going to take the initiative and add a fourth that large moment to the school committee. Now, I know that was my suggestion. I made it in a meeting, but I'm just one person of this committee. And I just think it's imperative that, you know, anything that further affects, impacts, makes better the school committee, that we be part of that conversation. So with that, I'll make a motion for favorable action that the superintendent would write a letter, as she did the last time, send it via email, but also send it via mail to the council president and each member, asking, you know, proceed at the table. Should there be any more conversations in the school committee, any reactions as far as the home role activity goes? Very simple. Thank you.
Second the motion.
You're muted, Ms. Abraze.
I clicked on. Ms. Cardello, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Throw you to Mr. Parker. Mr. Parker, when you say to be part of the the discussion on any home rule petitions impacting the school committee, what type of a meeting would that be? I mean, would that be a committee of the whole in order to discuss things? I mean, how would we legally be able to do that? We're just there to discuss, not vote on, but discuss and ask questions and give our opinion. Is that basically what we're doing?
I mean, I think that would be determined by the city council, but, you know, referring to the legislative affairs or a committee of the whole. So, but that, again, you know, that's not within our power. You know, we're asking them, you know, for the courtesy.
Right. Just trying to narrow it down so that when we do request that, that we're going in the right direction so that they know what we're looking for. We're not trying to take their votes away. We just want to be part of the, you know, the bantering, so to speak, back and forth, the good, the bad, and the indifferent, to see what is best for the whole city, you know, not just us, not just them, but the entire city. So I mean, would you think it would be legislative affairs? Or leave it up to them?
I mean, that's my suggestion, but again, it's up to them. I don't have a copy of the previous communication that's written and sent by the superintendent. But I don't believe we, I think we actually asked that to go to legislative affairs. But, you know, that's, you know, that's, they're, they're right.
Exactly. Okay. I'm on board with that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Cardello. All right. A call for the question?
Sure. Motion is made, seconded to, for favorable action. Item two, school committee requesting we be included in any and all home rule chatted discussion impacting the school committee with a letter being sent from the superintendent, president, and each member of the council. Roll call please, Addie.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes. It in the affirmative, motion passes.
Ms. Abraze?
Ms. Cardello?
Thank you. Just recently, at a council meeting, there was a discussion made when somebody called for the question. And the call for the question is actually a motion that has to be voted on. And we didn't do that. We were ready to vote for it, but then Frank just instead of saying, you know, to vote, he said call for the question, which I know stops all debate. But they just realized that if you look in Robert's rules, you do have to vote on that. So we kind of have a motion just hanging out there.
I don't think it was seconded, was it?
I don't know. I thought it was a joke, honestly.
Yeah, it was not seconded.
I thought he was kidding around.
There was never a second.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you.
But she is right. Right. No, I heard that. Number three, Mr. Parker, school committee as opposed to transfer the $300,000 from the Special Education Department Transportation Account to the foundation budget. The floor is yours.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to send a letter to the city council president and the membership, again, to the superintendent's office, both via email and regular mail, citing our opposition to this transfer.
Not second the motion.
Okay, Ms. Parker?
Okay, now that we have the motion on the floor, you know, why? So as we know, we had asked that $300,000 be transferred from the after-school line item back to special ed transportation. That's what we submitted. And what was on the calendar was something that was different. It was explained why they were doing it by, you know, the mayor and CFO, to transfer $300,000 from the special ed transportation account to the foundation budget. I just sense from watching the last council meeting that there's some confusion on what the actual intent of this particular motion, CO411-20 is, I think, and I understand why from watching some of these meetings, they can be quite confusing. That when he has sped transportation and $300,000, you think it's the same piece, but it's not. It's two different pieces. So I think for a point of clarification, you know, I think it's imperative for us to, city council, you know, how we feel on this particular transfer and state our opposition to it. Also too, as a side note, this Thursday night at 6 o'clock is the Ways and Means Committee. This item is in committee with the city council. And, you know, the superintendent and members of our staff will have an opportunity to speak with it along and have a conversation with both members of the city hall. So that's the rationale behind it.
Ms. Cardello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What exactly is the foundation budget? And once money is put into that, what can it be used for? And how do we take it from that budget? Is it a school budget? Is it a city budget that we have access to? I'm really not sure what a foundation budget is per se.
Mr. Parker?
It's our budget. It's our school budget. But what it does is, you know, every community, every district is rated on net school spending at the end at least 100%. And the point of making the transfer is to stay whole at 100%. So, you know, it's still be within our budget. We can spend it, you know, if that transfer was to happen. And I think it's a question.
Okay, but then why would we be, thank you for that, but why would we be opposed to transferring it from sped to the foundation budget? Oh, just so that we're not in violation of net school spending?
No, it's clarified because our request was to take $300,000 from the after-school line item account and put it back to special ed transportation. So it's actually, it's two different, two different transfers. It just happens to be the same amount. And one of the transfers includes the same account, being special ed transportation.
Okay, so the one we're talking about here is we don't want to take the $300,000 that was taken from transportation and put it back into transportation. We want to put it into, but we don't want to put it in the foundation budget either. Where do we want to put that money?
Okay, our request was to take $300,000 from the after-school line item and transfer it back to special ed education transportation line item. So that was, you know, the budget as originally presented to us as a body. But during the public hearing or the budget hearing, we decided that where there was a zero balance on the afternoon, or there wasn't a budget lineup for after-school, we agreed as a body to pull $300,000 from sped and put it into after-school program. We are now looking at that and realize that it kind of offset net school spending by doing that, that math. And therefore, we would like to revert back to the original budget as presented to us and keep our net school spending, you know, whole. Because that $300,000 that we transferred out slightly inflates it while keeping the budget the same in the bottom line.
Okay, so that's the primary reason, just to make it so that we're not over net school spending. We don't want to put it somewhere else that we might need to use it. We'd rather just put it back there and then we're not over net school spending. Is that what I'm hearing?
We will be at, if our transfer went through, because of the Devon School lease, we will be under net school spending by $300,000.
Okay, so does that make a difference on who's responsible for paying the lease at the Devon School if we put that money back or if we don't?
I mean, right now, we're still paying for it. It's our line item, and then nothing's been negotiated any differently.
So we wouldn't be able to take that and put it in the foundation budget so we could use that towards the lease? Oh, no, because then we'd still be technically, although not realistically, but technically, we'd still be over net school spending. That's what you're saying?
I don't think I'm saying that.
Okay, if we didn't put it back into the transportation budget,
Yeah.
then we would be, at that point, if we do, we're exactly even. We're not over. If we don't put it back, then it's going to look like we've exceeded the net school spending by that $300,000. That's, I'm sorry, that's the way I've been understanding it.
Madam Superintendent?
Yeah, if you could help me.
I think the point is, is that we never asked for the transfer that is being asked for now on the city council agenda. Our ask had been that the $300,000 that we had put in the after-school line, because we had put it there from the special ed transportation budget, be put back into the special ed transportation budget. What's on the city council agenda, which we never once requested, so I'm guessing that request was denied. But the request that's now being made is to take another $300,000 out of our special education transportation line and put it into our budget. That is a transfer we never asked for. So is that my, that is what I'm, so net school spending or not, it's not a transfer we requested.
Okay, so we're going to take more money out of it? We're taking more money out of that, out of the transportation?
Well, what's confusing to me is that we haven't gotten an answer on the first one, which was the request for our transfer, the request we made. And so my guess is that the answer is no, because instead we, that wasn't approved or denied. That's what I originally thought was being put on the agenda. But instead, what's being put on the agenda is an additional amount of money coming out of the special ed transportation line, which is my understanding of what's on the agenda, but we never initiated that. So I think we're waiting on our first request to see if the, that we had put forward to the city council. And then I don't know about the second request.
Okay.
Did I, did I say that correctly?
I just feel like I'm a bit confused because I wasn't aware of the additional 300.
I don't think any of us were. I think it came up at city council. Is that correct?
Okay.
And then, and that's a fair statement. And that's why I put this on the agenda, because there's been some confusion, you know, surrounding, you know, the terms transfer $300,000 special ed. And I want to point out to our colleagues in the city council, when it comes before them, that, you know, this is not what we requested. I think that's what it comes down to. Now, if I can, Mr. Chairman, actually, no. After everybody speaks, I'd like to add something too.
Ms. Murray?
So I don't know if it's helpful to hypothesize about what happened with the change in what the city council is putting forth versus what we asked for, but I assumed it was a misunderstanding and that they thought that they were granting us or proposing to grant us what we had requested, but in fact, requested the exact opposite or pretty close to the exact opposite. So so I wasn't assuming that we, that our original request was denied. I was just assuming that it was misunderstood and then misrepresented when it went forward. So a clarification in my mind would be helpful because obviously there's a communication breakdown between what we're requesting and what we're actually getting. Millie, is that helpful?
I felt like I went to sleep for two weeks and, because I missed that whole thing. because I missed that whole thing about that additional three hundred thousand. I, I just was very confused. And I thought I understood everything and, you know, I had a new explanation and priors and we've gone through this before and it felt like we'd belabored it. And then I see this on the agenda and I go, oh my goodness, that three hundred thousand again? So now we're talking a different three hundred thousand. So maybe, maybe I was sleeping, but I, I, I think I might understand it a little bit better now. Thank you.
Parker, you wanted to add something at the end?
Yes, um, and if I could, you know, one of the arguments, um, to pull the money out of special education is that, you know, it's a COVID year, you're not going to spend the money. Did some research and, you know, we, as a, as school body, a school district, unless charter schools, we can't carry money over from year to year to year. Right? We can only do it, um, in specified revolving accounts. So was doing some research and I came across chapter forty, section thirteen A. And it's called school district reserve funds to pay for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs for special education, out of district tuition or transportation. And just please, if I could just read a caption. So the district may establish an appropriate transfer money to reserve fund to be utilized in the upcoming fiscal years to pay without further appropriation for unanticipated or unbudgeted cost of special education out of district tuition or transportation. The balance in such a reserve shall not exceed two percent of the annual net school spending of the school district. So what this does is I read it, it gives us an opportunity to build a reserve account for special education. And we've seen that in the past, and I think it might have been in the task force report or wherever it was, but there was one year where thirty new students came in with IEPs during the school year. And IEPs, um, out of district placement, one even required a nurse. So let's just say that probably costs thirty five thousand dollars per kid. So that's a million dollars of unanticipated costs that we had to cut somewhere else in that same year. Now, if we had a balance in special ed transportation, and I think two percent of, um, net school spending were probably around, be around two, two million dollars, I knew maybe shake your head. Right? If we could have reserve account of about two million dollars going to next fiscal year because we didn't use the sped transportation money from this year, we would be in a better position to, to, to tackle and pay for those unforeseen expenses. Because to pay for special ed when it's unforeseen, it comes out of the general population. And we need to protect those kids too. So we really got an opportunity here to build a result, a, a resolve and revolving if we don't spend that money. And I think that needs a further conversation. In fact, what I'm going to do is propose that to the school finance review board because in order to do this, you do need the city, um, side to approve it. So that's where I'm going with this in, in, in the long run. Because I think that'll be, uh, puts us in a better position, puts the city in a better position because, you know, if we come in with an extra a million, two million dollars in special ed, um, cost that's been unforeseen, we don't have to go to them to go into, uh, the stabilization fund. We can then go into the reserve account if that should happen. Thank you.
All right, uh, so the motion, as I understand it, is, uh, is it the spark is it to send a letter to the city council president and each city councillor?
And, and copy each city councilor, you know, by, by, uh, email, email, because some don't read their emails.
Basically to explain and hopefully?
Just simply state our opposition to it. Um, you know, again, there's, there's, there's a meeting on Thursday, House Ways, uh, House Ways and Means, the Ways and Means Committee. Uh, we can, we can further explain why, um, to our counterparts during, during that time. And have a conversation about it. And, um, you know, at the end, we'll find out what's, uh, what we all agree about and what was best, but I think that's, I think that's the, 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 the thing. As we work together.
Very good. Okay. So, uh, motion made and seconded to, uh, send a letter of opposition to the, uh, city council president, copy to all the, uh, city councillors. Roll call, please, Addie.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes. In the affirmative, motion passes. Roman numeral seven, subcommittee reports. I don't believe there ain't no roman numeral eight, bills and payrolls. Uh, Mr. Parker?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, bills and payrolls totaled two million, three hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty cents and, uh, I believe everybody got a copy earlier, uh, earlier today. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of two million, three hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of two million, three hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty cents. Uh, roll call, please, Addie.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes. In the affirmative, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make a motion for roll call vote to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of two million, three hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of two million, three hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty cents. Roll call, please, Addie.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes. In the affirmative, motion passes. No unfinished business, no new business, no hearings. Roman numeral twelve, matters for executive session.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Parker?
I make a motion, uh, that where there's no action necessary to further this back to sponsor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to refer the matter scheduled for executive session back to sponsor. Uh, roll call, please, Addie.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes. In the affirmative, motion passes.
Make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn.
If the chairman not, if the chairman not sure if the mayor is saying bye or if he wants?
No, it was, no, is that? I thought, I thought you wanted to speak on adjournment. Maybe you didn't want to adjourn. This was, this was a little too early. We didn't go the full five hours. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. A roll call, please, Addie.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yeah.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes. In the affirmative, we are adjourned. Everybody stay safe. And, uh, look forward to my last meeting as, uh, chairman next time, in a couple of weeks.
We all bring a bottle of champagne for you?
I don't, I don't drink champagne, but you can mail me the beer of your choice and it will be accepted. Thank you. Take care, everybody. Good night.
Good night, everyone.